This is the time in the agenda where the public can speak on any items that are not agendized. I have some requests for agenda items. Is there anyone who'd like to speak generally? I see no takers. And we'll go on to our numbered items. The first is a proclamation to Captain Dorsey of the Sheriff's Department on behalf of the International Footprint Association, Inland Empire Chapter 67, declaring the week of May 12 Blue Ribbon Week in support of the men and women of law enforcement. And the proclamation says, among other things, that whereas we contract with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and whereas an effort to recognize and preserve the continued commitment of peace officers and law enforcement agencies, the members of our support our law enforcement committee have designated the week of May 12 as Blue Ribbon Week, and it's intended to show confidence in all peace officers and law enforcement agencies from the general public. And we'll be displaying blue ribbons in support of this, and it will demonstrate our support for every police agency now serving the cities and counties of San Bernardino. So, we declare this, proclaim the week of May 12 as Blue Ribbon Week, and please come forward.
Would you like to say?
I'm just fine.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Item number two is a proclamation declaring April 2014 DMV Donate Life California Month. I believe we do this every year. And the whereas is, I guess you're here to receive.
Yes.
The whereas is include, whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as the greatest expression of compassion, and whereas more than 121,000 individuals nationwide and 21,000 in California are currently on the organ transplant waitlist, and whereas 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California alone, and whereas a single individual's donation of multiple organs can save up to eight lives, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, and over 10 million Californians have signed up with the state authorized Donate Life California Registry, and whereas residents can sign up on this registry when renewing their driver's license. Therefore, I declare and on behalf of the entire city do proclaim the month of April 2014 DMV Donate Life California Month. So, please come forward. Item number three is a public hearing, Council Bill R-2014-12, agreement with Mansfield Oil, and we have a report by the Assistant City Manager.
This is a economic incentive agreement between Mansfield Oil and the City of Loma Linda. Mansfield Oil is operating a facility at Corporate Business Center here in the City of Loma Linda. They've approached the city to continue the operation in town and also to designate the operation as the sole point of sale for ongoing sales in the State of California. Public hearing was published concerning the agreement complying with Government Code Section 53083. Mansfield, it's estimated that their operations will maintain and add between 10 and 15 full-time jobs to the community. There are no part-time or temporary positions contemplated. The retention agreement would end up with additional revenues to the city via sales tax of approximately $442,000 per year.
Okay. Are there any questions by council? Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this matter? I see no takers, so I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll go ahead and move Council Bill R-2014-12.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Unanimous vote in favor of Council Bill R-2014-12. Congratulations. And we move to item number four. This is a public hearing, appeal of planning commission decision. I hear that this will be continued further.
That's correct. Steph is asking that we continue this to the, what is this, April to the May, the first meeting in May. The fire appeals board heard the property owner's case, came up with some conclusions as far as what were or were not fire issues, and that there are some lingering mediation issues to resolve. So, we're giving the property owner a chance to resolve those issues before we bring it back to you.
Okay, so, does that require a motion to continue it to a date certain? Okay. The first meeting in May? May 13.
I move we continue this to May 13.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we need, because someone may have responded to the public hearing, to allow public comment first?
Yes, if there were anybody here who does not wish to return at that future date or cannot be there, we could entertain comments from them.
Okay, should I officially open the public hearing then?
You may, yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open. And...
Just at this point, more of a question, is that the scope of the public comment that is in order at this time? The date had been established for the continuance? Or, may I address?
Well, typically, when we continue a public hearing, we offer the opportunity for people who are here and traveled at great expense and distance to come and can't come back, but I don't think you fall under that category. So, you don't need to make the sum total of your comments at this time. If you choose to, it's certainly, you're welcome to. But as far as any further discussion, because we're continuing it, there's no substance coming forward from the staff report.
Usually, it's better to save those comments if you intend to speak at a later date, so that the, I believe Councilman Daley would also be present at the next meeting. He wouldn't be privileged to hear your comments tonight, and that would impose upon him a burden of going back and reviewing minutes or notes.
Sure, don't want to do that. I think it was more of establishing mutual expectations at this point, that that may... Well, you know, my little toe is already in the hot bath, so I'll continue very briefly here with that. I guess I'll save most of the thanks that I was going to offer to this council, although it doesn't hurt to say it very often. This is, this is an amazing city, and the process that has taken us to this point has been both an interesting one and a reaffirming one about the interaction of government and its citizens. There's some pretty dedicated people in this room. I believe everyone meets that standard. Having said that, I want to be sure that as we continue, staff mentioned that there are some additional items to be remediated, and probably comes down to that. Let me more ask a question, if I may publicly, and that is to be sure that we understand what the expectation is at this point of the city post-hearing. We understand that there are remaining only really four items of discussion. They were the ones that were presented to the fire hearing board, that all of the other original findings of the public hearing had been previously stipulated by the city as no longer present. The controversy was over the ones that were presented at the hearing board. Is it appropriate to ask for a clarification that that's what's at play?
Is that a question or a statement?
It's a question.
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. Okay. So, with those items, I guess we can leave it at that, if we know that that is the list, and we'll, we will, oh, I know, will the city plan on an inspection of those items before the next hearing?
Yes. We would want to make sure that those items are remediated and you're in compliance with those.
Correct. Okay? And so, we will work on establishing a time for that, and terrific, we move forward with that.
I'm assuming you're going to call and say, "Look what we did," and we'll be out there and take a look.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue the item to May 13. Any other discussion? Any other comment from the public? Okay, no comment from the public. I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll proceed to a vote. Those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed, no. It's unanimous, we're continuing this public hearing. So, the public hearing itself will open again. Okay, so, the public can have further comments. Okay, the consent calendar is quite large, and is there any motion or request to pull any items?
I'd like to pull item 14 and 17, please.
I actually want to pull item number 10 and 18.
10 and 18.
I just have questions on them.
Okay. Then, per our standard practice, let's deal with those now in order, number 10.
Can you give us a breakdown as to how much of those fees are related to Department of Finance litigation versus personnel issues?
It's $10,000 for the attorney fee for the litigation to the State Department of Finance, and $60,000...
I'm sorry, it's $60,000 for the personnel issues.
And when do you anticipate you're actually going to brief us on those in closed session?
Which one?
On the personnel issues. I'm not aware that there are legal issues.
The legal issue with the personnel, I don't think it will come back to the city council, is investigation that we're doing is part of the personnel, we haven't come back to it.
I would like to get a little bit of an understanding of what's happening.
You're governed by rules, personnel confidentiality rules and things like that.
Let us, can we give them a little update, or...
I would anticipate, probably by the next council meeting, there'd be an opportunity to discuss a personnel action.
Okay, we will give you the update on the action that we plan to do with the employees.
Okay, sounds good. And then, go ahead, do you want me to go with the next item?
Yes, go ahead with number 18. We'll do it out of order.
Okay.
Go off, agent comments left.
Oh, okay, I'll wait until it's coming back.
Number 14, I can answer number 14.
Okay, go ahead, 14.
Is that every year when the, we have, the county have a lien, tax lien sales, and they give it option to the city first to see if the city would like to purchase that land? And the one in question is, in the Edison Eastman, south of, between Lockton and Beaumont Avenue, when they build that subdivision to the east, they build little drainage ditches along the east side, and later on, the developer who developed this piece of property kind of neglect that piece of property and don't pay the property tax. So, it's a tax sale. So, therefore, the city said, "We can just purchase it for $2,700 per park." For, it's really drainage ditch that we have to keep maintaining.
I guess I don't understand, because the agenda item says protesting property sale.
Okay, you can explain that part.
The county has this property listed for a potential auction, and if we protest that auction, then we have first opportunity to purchase. The property owner still has an opportunity to redeem, but if it is not, then the city would be able to purchase.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, number 18.
You want 18 first?
Yeah, because Ovi wanted to finish his department.
Okay, number 18 is a group of contracts through the planning department for, when a developer does their environmental studies, they make, place a deposit with the city. City engages a consultant to do the environmental study and pays them out of that deposit. The city code requires that for all contracts, and I believe it's more than $20,000, except for consulting fees, that council approve them. We've engaged this because they kind of fall under the consulting fee thing, but out of abundance of caution, and because we're starting to get some fairly large contracts, that we'd like the council to approve them. There's no city funds expended. These are deposit accounts that are paid back out of the deposit.
And actually, my question is that I recognize all three of the, well, two of the firms, and appears that it's the same ones that we engage just about every single project, and I'm just wondering whether the city maybe should start considering actually putting some of these items for bids and seeing if we can get lower bids, because we're not really quite sure. I understand that the city's familiar with them, and therefore, it's easier to just approve it, but it seems to me like in the future, we may want to consider, as we have other projects, actually putting some of these items for bid.
Actually, what happens is we have the list of seven approved vendors. We send out between three and five, depending on the size of the project, requests for proposal to those vendors, and then we select based on price and performance history who gets the job, and these guys are the ones that are coming in at cost. Or, as in the case of Kunsman, they've done just about every traffic study in the city, so they can end up not having to recreate it and just do addition to their studies, so they would be fairly competitive. Item B on their plans plus, they did the original environmental for the land split in Area D, so they continued on because they already had some experience with that. It really does get put out to different contractors, and depending on who bids the best gets it.
And that's fine. So, then, I guess, then my next question would be, when we do this next time, show us the bidding process, and what are the actual submitted bids for the other ones? And the reason I ask is, we do that over at the airport. We show in the staff report exactly the dates that it was sent out on the street, and what they came back, and what the decision staff made. So, that's what I would request for in the future.
And what I want to reiterate is, is that typically, these are engaged under the consulting clause of the ordinance, and then we'll bring them to you, just these larger ones, for confirmation, because in some of these development things, time is of the essence.
No, I understand that in this particular case. I'm just, like I said, the same two corporations have, seems to be getting every single project ever since I've been here, and I just think that in the interest of fairness, if we are bidding, then I want to see the documentation showing what, who's doing the bidding and how we go about choosing them.
Those seven approved vendors, they've had to go through an approval process, correct?
Yeah, we went through approval process, I think it was like, just before I started in community development, five, four or five years ago.
And that's something that's done routinely, like every 10, five, 10?
As need, and I think what happened was, is we were putting these bids out to a broad spectrum of people in Orange County and LA County that really didn't have expertise in the Inland Empire, and weren't able, really able to bid against it. And that could be reason, one reason why you're seeing the same, same names. You know, in that list, you've, we did Hoagland Ireland, who's not on this, but we did them for the housing element. LES Land Services did the gas station. So, we, it does rotate through.
I just know that sometimes, for the, just sake of government being government, we make things too hard, and I understand we want to be transparent, but like at the county level, we're going through the new recertification process for all of our auto mechanics. Well, the problem is, nobody's making the list. And so, the question is now, what do we do? We've got cars that have to get repaired, and they're not submitting the paperwork, they're not doing whatever, and we can't just let the cars sit there. And, you know, we know we have good mechanics, we have good shops that are fair and that do the right thing, but sometimes I think we get so paranoid and worried about, well, we got to make sure we got to look like we're doing, you know. I trust, I trust that they're watching these things.
Yeah, well, I do too. My only concern is that these are costs that are not paid by us, but paid by the developers, and we're really not sure as to whether they're really getting the best, best deal, unless we demonstrate on paper that they are. So, that's all. Thanks.
That's fine.
Who asked for number 17?
All right, number 17A was for the animal vespers program last weekend at the university church. They, you see, both of these are kind of tied together in that historically, the city's done a lot of special events, activities, tour city resources, funds, planning time, coordination is spent on activities going on in town, and we've never really tracked those things unless they get to be some big monumental program. So, what we're trying to do is work these special events through the special events process. Some of these that have, that are directly focused on core activities in the community and things that we've done for, you know, 10 or 15 years without getting any fees, we're bringing to you as fee waivers. So, the university church is asking for a fee waiver on the special events permit, and I think it's something like 250 bucks.
240.
240, okay. And the St. Joseph the Worker Church, for their Easter Sunday has, for at least the last 14 years, had sheriff's department and city staff involved in traffic control on Mountain View. They're asking for the same fee waiver for their special events permit, and I don't think it's clear in their letter in your packet, but they're also asking for, which we have done since the beginning of time, as far as I know, waived staff time costs to do traffic control and those kinds of things. It works out to about 16 to 20 hours for that particular day.
My only concern with that, and again, given my job now, where I work, I go through the same thing over and over again, and there's an event every weekend in that city, every weekend. And some event planners, people, groups, whatever it be, whether it be a triathlon or some type of run or something like that, most of them are required to pay the cost and fees to bring out the extra deputies to, for the city staff and going over the plans and the permits and all that kind of stuff, because it really does tax our resources and taxes our staff. And then, you know, there's those occasional ones that get waived for a variety of reasons, whether it's a, you know, it's a charity organization, they just couldn't afford it or whatnot, but I just don't want to get into the habit of that, because my guess is that either the sheriff's department's doing it on their regular time, and we're missing out on patrol proactive time because of that, or B, they're using whatever overtime budget they have to supplement this when, when that overtime should be used for something in a bigger picture to benefit the entire city. So, I just have concerns about that. I think we need to start watching, especially for some of the bigger events and things that happen, whether it be the parade and whatnot. What's the actual cost to the city, and are we recouping that?
That is exactly why we're doing that, because when we went back, we're probably doing somewhere between 25 and 35 special events a year, and there are taxes on the city resources. So, this is a way for us at least to get an idea of what we're really doing and what's out there.
Because, believe me, I experience it now. People will take advantage of that, and pretty soon you get into a point where, you know, it's been going on for so long, it's hard to turn it around. And I'm, you know, I won't sound like the Grinch, but...
But to be fair to these organizations, this is the first time that they face this, and we have done these things, you know, without charge, basically without any record of it happening for time immemorial. So, if there is a desire to recoup that cost, that maybe as there's some warning for them, you know, the week or two before or the week after their event, so that they can budget and plan for it.
I would share Mr. Duber's concerns. I wonder, do we have some sort of strategy on how we decide who gets waivers and who doesn't? Do we just say, "Well, these people always had it, so they get to keep having it"? Do we say, "This is a charity, so they get it, and somebody else doesn't get it"? I kind of don't like anything that's kind of just open-ended, where there's no strategy. So, I don't know, do we have some documents?
Well, this is, yeah, this is just coming up. So, this is what we are doing, just to let you know. We start to require now, at least they pull the special event permit for two things. First, we know what's going on. Second, by doing so, they have to have insurance, which named the city as an additional insurer, so if anything happened, we're not liable for it. And the third item is, we can start keeping track of, as a matter of fact, I asked, I asked my staff to come up the list of event that happened here in town, and which one the one that we, we help and they pay, and which one, the one that we helped them without, we waived the fee, for example, this one. So, we will have a calendar. University have a lot of them, and we use, I usually work closely with Steve Hotel when he gave me the list at the beginning of the year, but now they have a new staff, I need to work with the new staff to come up with a list of special event that they plan to have at that university. So, yes, I'm working on that list, and I'd be happy to bring it back.
And they are aware of the new fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they can easily fit it in their budget.
Yes, for example, last, the triathlon...
Is it coming up?
It's coming up. They will pay all the costs, so...
The cost on that to them, to the city?
The special event permit's only $240, but if they require the sheriff help, then they pay the actual cost, and the same thing with the city staff for law closure, the street closure, the detour.
You've got the road crews going out, setting barricades. You've got all that stuff that goes on behind the scenes, and, I mean, in reality, I mean, these are things we probably should have been looking at before, because if we want to really be fiscally conservative, we need to pay attention to what...
So, in the past, when we've had runs?
They paid.
They have paid?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not like...
Yes, for a big event, we can't afford it. We can't afford to pay the deputy to come out and close the street, and the only one that, for the big event, which is on the list today, is the parade, which the city sponsored that one, so they don't pay.
So, I'm still not clear, in the past, they were paying for some of the expenses or they were not?
No. The only, the one that I know of is a St. Joseph the Worker that...
No, no, I'm not talking about these. I'm talking about other events in the city. Like, for example, there was a race that I was a part of.
Oh, they paid. They have been paying.
They have been paying the additional cost?
Yes.
What the permit does is it pays us for processing the, it doesn't pay for the staff to go out and man the barricades. It only pays for the processing fees, and that's all that's being waived here.
And I agree with the need for insurance too, because that's a big thing.
But it sounds like those events were paying for the additional staff.
Well, you said some have been and some haven't been, because we've been waiving a lot of that stuff, and that, hence why we've got two in front of us asking us to waive them, because we're going to start seeing them now.
I see.
But for a place like these two, the $280 is their entire budget for the event, that kind of thing. So, it's, it's trying to help the small charities.
And again, we would like to bring it to the council to make a decision, and this way you can say yes and no, and the big thing is, we want to make sure of insurance, and we cover.
Okay. So, number 16, we're going in reverse order. Did you say 14 and 17, or 14 through 17?
14 and 17.
Okay, then we're ready for the vote.
Wait, I have one more.
Which one?
Sorry, number 13, I'm just, it's a special pet peeve of mine. What are the modifications to the specifications? Are the modifications that it's actually going to be put to the rest of the homes in the place and just hope?
in the place and just hoping it's open?
No.
No, okay, we can move on then.
If you can come up with about 26 million bucks, we'll be glad to roll it out. But basically, it's modifications to the building, the building code involved with that fire stopping and the type of wire and the construction methods, where it's going.
Did the, one guy ever get internet on the north side of Mission?
No.
Well, you're supposed to say yes, you made it happen. Question, just a follow-up on 18. So when do you anticipate to start seeing dirt being moved for the VA facility?
You will be seeing the VA environmental on the 22nd of this month, pending, pending your approval of the environmental and the project. They will be pulling grading and structural and foundation permits on the morning of the 23rd. They're all approved, and it's very possible you'll see work out there on the morning of the 24th.
That's awesome.
But they are planning a groundbreaking ceremony sometime very early May.
Okay.
So for this month, we can have a second meeting on April 22nd.
That's your notice. Yes, I was aware of that, so, okay, thank you.
And again, we have been working with them very closely and, and pretty much worked very hard to get all the permit, all the plan check in on time, so they're ready to come out and pull permits.
Okay. I just wanted to comment that if you had made all of the discussion items consent and the consent discussion, it would have been closer to the truth. We discussed the consent calendar more than the discussion items. Okay, so is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Please no. Okay. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous, the consent calendar's been approved. Are there any reports of councilmen?
I spent a week in Washington DC recently, and I got to tell you, it was inspiring to a certain degree. I spent a full day at Mount Vernon, kind of reacquainting myself with George Washington. And it was just, it's pretty awesome to think about the fact that he gave up power three times. And they wanted to make him the king if we had gone that direction. And each time, for each position he was in, he gave up. He admonished everyone that we need to act like civil servants instead of more like dictators. And I guess his farewell address, I didn't know this, but his farewell address, when he left the presidency after his second term, is read every year at the start of the legislative, of the congressional season, it's read into the record. Because he, again, talks about all those good wholesome things that we should be doing that none of them follow. So I got my constitution tie on.
The main, the main content of that speech that's repeated is beware of the parties.
Yes, actually, you're right. You're absolutely right, it is.
Yeah, and he didn't even win a Nobel Prize as a consolation prize for winning the presidency. You know, it's, okay. Any reports of officers?
No, sir.
Okay, then the city council is adjourned. We have our major boards to discuss now. The successor agency, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on that very short agenda? Seeing no takers, we have the consent calendar for your consideration.
Just had a question on, I noticed that the tax rebate system that we have with Anexter still goes under the successor agency. Will that continue forever? What's the plan with that?
I'm glad you asked a question.
No, that, and Diana stopped me when I go off the rails here, but that agreement had a cap of a dollar amount in rebates. At some point in the late second quarter, early third quarter, we should hit that cap. We're in discussions with Anexter to come up with a replacement agreement. When that agreement comes in, those funds will be coming out of sales tax, not out of redevelopment. So there will be a hit to our Anexter revenue as we offset that.
So at this point, they were part of the ROPS? Is that how they allowed us to do it? Okay. And I understand the part as to why there would be a hit to Anexter.
What's that?
Why would it be a hit to?
Well, because right now, we get all the sales tax, and the redevelopment agency paid them back their rebate, which came out of ROPS.
Okay.
If we re-engage in some type of agreement with them, the redevelopment agency or the successor agency would no longer pay for that rebate. It would come out of their sales taxes.
Okay, I thought it was already coming out of their sales tax.
Right now, the money comes out of redevelopment funds.
Based on their sales, though.
Right, but agreement is in this quarter, I mean, this year, same.
So we're just going to have to renew it under the city, but it shouldn't change the amount of revenue the city's getting?
It will not change the amount that comes in, but it will change the amount that goes out, because right now, the city gives them nothing back. The successor agency gives it back.
The city gets all the goods and redevelopment.
In the future, the city will have to give it back.
That is a concern. That's, we're talking about several hundred thousand dollars a year then.
Yes, but what we did was, we started talking to them, and instead of taking 50%, instead, we asked them to take 25%, and the city will pay 25% of our general fund, which I'm working on the budget, that's how I calculated, to look at 25% instead of paying them 50%.
So you're going to continue to update us on that as we move along?
We're in ongoing discussions, yes.
Okay, so is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Is that a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous, consent calendar is approved, and that meeting is adjourned. I'll open the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on that short agenda? I see no takers, so we go to the consent calendar.
Quick follow-up on the consent calendar. Just once again, we, on this particular month, looks like we have $8,000 in attorney's fees. Can you explain to me what those fees were for on the housing agenda?
Where do you see $3,000?
Markets.
Darling, Yocan, Carlson, $8,100.
Eight, yeah, I see about $9,000, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, $8,128.
I guess total, you're right, $9,000, sorry.
Plus a hundred bucks, so $9,000.
Yeah, correct. So I just wanted to give a clarification as to what.
So Pam, what did he do for us for $9,000?
A lot of it pertains to the properties that we are now, are now available for sale. We've gone along with all of the, jumped through all the hoops from the state, and so we are able to sell them. A lot of them has to do with that, and in our attempts to get outside financing for the sale of those three homes, which has taken a lot of time.
Okay, thank you.
Compared to our other attorney fees on there, he's a great deal.
Yeah, but he charges this and the, and the successor agencies.
Yeah, I know, but both of those combined still doesn't equal.
And then the other part also deals with, with the Department of Finance responding to their inquiries and finalizing that transaction as far as the transfer of the housing assets.
We all worry for Mark and his employment as all of this winds down. We shed tears for him.
Well, it sounds like the housing authority goes on forever, so I'm not sure it's that big of a deal.
Well, eventually, it's going to come to an end, both the successor agency and housing authority, because the county will take over, right?
I'd go ahead and move the consent item, consent agenda, calendar.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is unanimous, the consent calendar has been approved. Are there any member reports? Any reports of officers?
I want to remind the council that we will have the April 22nd city council meeting, and prior to the meeting, we will have a workshop with the budget committee for the budget for next fiscal year. So the budget probably start at six o'clock, so, or sooner. That will be for next fiscal year budget. We have workshop with the, with the budget committee, Owe Committee Room. And my goal is to bring the budget back to the city council, the first meeting in May, and have a review and approval, May 13.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we're adjourned, and thank you all for coming. Come back in two weeks.